Praise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One day, the God indivisible would never be even dusted for all.
Right. Can we please have roll call?
May, Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Garnio is not here yet. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney is present remotely.
Introduction, introductions, presentations, and proclamations. We haven't any. Call the public, please.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for a call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration, and decision at a later date or responding to criticism. I have several cards. The first was Mark Bonacista.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bonacista. I'm a resident, I'm a resident here of Chino Valley. And last time I was here, I was talking in regards to the U D O subcommittee. And I'd like to probably just talk. I'm a better talker one-on-one, so I'll just talk to you, Mr. Anderson, and kind of explain the U, the U D O subcommittee.
I have to respond, sir. If you're gonna talk to me, at least use the right name.
Mr. Armstrong, sorry about that. Would really like to talk to you. There was a time where people were sitting just where you guys were and determined that we really needed to have a U D O subcommittee so that they could sit down and look at these different ordinances, have the citizens of the town of Chino Valley come and talk about that. And during that time, there was somebody that voted on that because now it was an official president, presence, or presidents. And I'm sure if we go back in history, we can probably pull that up and find out that actually somebody signed that and determined that there was actually a U D O subcommittee, and it was very important to bring any type of things up to the board before it was voted on. However, I've been noticing that there is no U D O subcommittee, and there's no people on the subcommittee. And I must have ruffled some feathers about a week ago because now I see it says on hold until further notice. And I'm a little bit curious to find out which of you council members, because it does say at the end of that, it does say council. Did you guys vote on that to put that on hold? Or somebody just decided to do that? I know that there is going to be some things coming up later today that are gonna have to be required and being voted on. However, that should be, and should be, an illegal operation because if you didn't sit down and go through the U D O subcommittee like you're supposed to, how can you be bringing this up to the board because nobody had a chance to discuss it? No, no people on the subcommittee were able to go through that. The citizens of Chino Valley didn't get to do that at all. Now, I do realize there's an economic development subcommittee that meets. There's also a water and utility subcommittee that meets. But there is no U D O subcommittee that meets. So I would really encourage you to really consider before you vote on that because if you don't do this first, everything that you guys are doing, every time that you raise your hand and say, yes, we approve it, and then, Mr. Jack Miller, you sign it, that's an illegal operation because it did not go through the U D O subcommittee as required in, in your own precedents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Garden.
Thank you. Whoa, 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 stop. We had a meeting this morning, or just a little while ago, executive session. And per council's wishes and legal advice, we are not allowing passing of time anymore from this point forward.
What I would like to bring up.
Sir.
To the board.
Sir.
Is that.
Did you hear me?
I didn't hear anything, and you, and I don't think that's legal. We have, we all have a right to speak here. They're giving my time, and I can, and I can do that.
Sir.
There was a, a time that there was a one oh five plus zero zero one.
Stand reset.
So, and I would like to talk about that. Because I don't, I'm, I'm not gonna sit. I'm gonna, I have, I have a legal right. I have a First Amendment right to speak. I'll keep speaking. That's fine.
Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Bonacista, you've had your three minutes. The rules say you get three minutes.
I, I would like to see where the A R S statue.
And then, somebody else can speak.
I would like to see the statue.
Can we have the next speaker called up, please?
And find out where the statue is that you can have an emergency meeting and change that.
The next speaker I have is Luke Solano.
Good evening. My name is Luke Solano. I'm a resident of Chino Valley. My plan was to graciously give my time to Mark. But since you lovely people have decided that you wanna run roughshod over our rights in this lovely town, you're on notice. Let's make it very, very clear. You cannot have an executive session and change the rules as to who can speak and who can't speak and get away with it. So, we will be organizing a group of people. We will be recalling every single one of you. And if that turns out to be a, be a problem, we will take you to court. Because this is absolutely insane and a violation of our constitutional rights outside of the city. This is a, a, this is a constitutional issue all the way up to federal. So, let's be, let's be very clear, and I only used just about a minute. So, remember that.
Thank you. Who's next?
Next, I have Julian Crose, Crose, Croce, Crochi.
Again, we're not gonna do this. Is there somebody else, please?
That's okay. I'd like to find out where, I'd like to talk to the attorney and bring the attorney in here. Where's the, where's the A R S?
We can give you his information.
I would like to have this right now. I would like the A, I would like to find out where that is in the statue. Because that's once again, you guys doing illegal activity and not being able to do that. So.
Next speaker comment card I have is from James Johnson.
So. Mr. Miller, I'll tell you what. There's so much corruption that's going on here. This is ridiculous. Well, you'll, you'll, you'll be hearing from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Who is next?
That was all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Current summaries, summaries and events and reports, status by mayor and council regarding current events. You got anything over here, guys?
No.
How about on this side?
Nope.
I do. Um, I, I wasn't sure Cindy if you were gonna cover the Halloween this weekend. So, okay. Okay, so, um, Halloween this weekend, the Saturday from two to six at Memory Park. And yes, I have Chino soccer stuff on because, uh, our boys and girls just won the quarterfinals and are moving on to semifinals, and I came from the game. Other than that, I yield.
All right. I don't, I don't have anything. Town manager Cindy Blackmore.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, after last council meetings called to the public, the mayor directed me to look into the comments that were made at call to the public. And I'm here tonight to provide a brief update to the council on that. So after listening to some of the comments and concerns, there were really two big topics that seemed to, um, come up. One was your Board of, the Board of Appeals, and one was actually the U D O subcommittee, which I heard again tonight. So, um, I wanna provide a brief update on what we have on going on with those. So, um, the town code does call for a three-member Board of Appeals. Um, and to date, that has not had any appointments on it. So, it was shortly after our new director got here, realized that we did not have a Board of Appeals in place. And so she started working with her staff to get a good process in place for the town of Chino Valley so that we're fulfilling our duties. So, you may remember, in July, we came to the council at a study session to discuss how we should move forward getting the board in place and getting some appoint, appointments on that board. And the discussion talked about having a building advisory board, which has a little bit broader scope than the narrow scope you would find in a Board of Appeals. And, um, so Lori's gonna talk to you about that tonight. We've been having a lot of discussion. Staff has worked really hard to get that ready, and she'll talk to you about that. And it'll be before you tonight to decide on. So we've been working on that, and we hope to have that rectified. And then we also had, um, I heard about the U D O subcommittee. So I wanna talk a little bit about the U D O subcommittee because I think there may be a misunderstanding on what that is. The U D O subcommittee is actually an ad hoc committee. And that means when it's necessary. So it's not actually required to meet at a regular basis. We actually discussed this at the November ninth Town Council work session. And the meetings were put on hold, and there were a number of reasons for that. One of the main reasons was because the Planning and Zoning Commission actually has the same powers and duties that the U D O committee was utilizing. So we already had a process in place for those things to be heard to initiate changes to the town zoning map or the provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance and to review and make recommendations to the Town Council on proposals to amend the town zoning map. So, and also we have the general plan update going on. So we wanted to try to limit as much as we could any amendments that were going on because the big process is changing as well. So, um, but it should be noted that all proposed text amendments are presented to the full council at noticed work sessions. It was kind of suggested that people have been denied their rights to review and discuss changes or that things have been done illegally, but I think this is a misunderstanding. Our, our public processes are all still in place. And actually, I think we've worked, tried to work to improve them. That's what we've been doing. So rather than going to a small set, a U D O subcommittee, a small set of the council, things come to the full council at a work session or just discussed in public. Then they move on to the P and Z for discussion and review. It has all the public notices and processes that are required. We follow all of the laws. And then it goes on to council again for final discussion and decision-making. So that's my update on that, Mayor. I'll answer any questions if you have any. And I hope to continue to clear up these misunderstandings.
Thank you for clarification.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying thank you for clarification.
Consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Does anybody wanna remove anything over here?
No.
Over here? Nope. All right. We only have one item.
Okay, I make a motion. We approve consent agenda, item A.
Second.
Second. Motion made in second and twice. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, action items. Consideration possible action to approve financial report for the three-month period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Joe Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight I have a very brief financial report, Mr. Mayor. I went ahead and reduced it from forty-six slides down per your request tonight. But it's also the very first quarter of the year, and we really haven't spent a lot of money when it comes to the departments. But I do have a few things I would like to go over. The first thing is, you know, every year we come to you with our annual budget, and we estimate our revenues, and we estimate our expenses. And I tell you, this is how much money I think we're gonna have at the end of June thirty to start the new budget you're with. And I never really report to how close those are and how well we did. And as you know, based on your direction, we conservatively estimate our revenues, and we conservatively estimate our expenses. So we overestimate expenses, underestimate revenues, and we usually come out on the positive side. We've been doing this with your direction for the last ten years, and it's actually helped Chino Valley turn into a very stable financial community. So I thought I would just run these numbers by you really quick. We thought that we were gonna be, have at the end of this budget year, and as you can see, we start with our beginning budget year of thirty million dollars. We brought in forty-four million, spent forty-one. So during the budget process, I was telling Mayor and Council that we'd end the year with a little over thirty-three million dollars. But we ended up ending with about thirty-five, almost thirty-six million dollars, about two-point-two million dollars to the good. Now, the majority of that was in the roads, uh, construction project because we just didn't put as, we did a lot of roadwork, but we didn't spend as much as we thought we were. But that money rolls forward so we can spend it this year. So it's more just a timing thing. But the important funds are really the general fund. We thought we were gonna end the year with nine-point-five million, and we almost ended the year with ten million. So we're about. So we're about four hundred, about a half million dollars to the better. And that's what we consistently have been doing each year, which helps us put a little more in our savings, our rainy day fund. Within five percent. The HERF Fund, twelve percent, again, it's a road thing with just more timing. Water and sewer, we were, we have a little bit less than we thought we were going to have in it. And we, and the sewers primarily getting more of the, the screw press and some of those capital things done a little bit sooner than we had projected. And then we have our COVID relief fund and I just wanted to put that number in there just so you can see we have that four million dollars that we've rolled over and designated for the, some infrastructure improvement projects in the budget. So overall, we're, you know, we're within a few percentage points. But we're always usually to our favor. So I just wanted to present that to you guys. Um, so overall this year, but the good news is general fund revenues for the first quarter have, are actually doing very well. Our total general fund revenues are up eighteen percent. Most of that is because of sales tax revenues are higher than we projected. And or over last year, retail sales are up nineteen percent. Construction is up nineteen and, and the bed taxes is down just slightly. Construction revenue is the one area that I think we just need to keep an eye on because we know the housing market is slowing a little bit. So, but we have some major, or I say, commercial construction activity, I think will probably help level that out if we do see a drop. But that's an area that we want to watch throughout the year. Intergovernmental revenues, they're up by twenty-one percent and that's really because of the state shared income tax distribution. And I'll show this to you on a chart near the end. And the good thing about the Fed in increasing rates is we do earn more money. And so our investment earnings are doing better, the money we do have in the bank. So there's good and bad about that, but it has, it is actually helping us. Um, expenditures are up thirty-three percent in the general fund. And that's really because we're putting three point one million dollars in the roads from the general fund. We're transferring that three point one million. So that's really what's driving that number. Overall, the departments are twenty-one percent of their budget. They should be at twenty-five percent. So they're not even over what they should be with only three months into the fiscal year. So they're all doing fine. HERF revenue slightly up, that's just the annual increase of HERF. And maintenance expenditures are down. And that's just a timing thing. We've ordered some equipment, we haven't received it and paid for it. So it'll, they'll be right on budget this year. Water revenue is up sixteen percent from about two hundred fifty-four to two ninety-three. And that's really an increase in water usage, twenty percent increase in user fees. Field stations receipts, and this is people hauling water from us are about ten percent and expenditures are just down slightly or about flat. The sewer enterprise fund revenues are up ten percent. Buying fees are up from twenty-four thousand to sixty thousand. Again, with residential construction slowing. This is one of those areas that we need to look at, keep an eye on too. I'm not anticipating that to continue to be up high. Uh, service sewer service fees, just, just our sewer revenue is up ten percent and their operating expenses are down nineteen. So really here's where we are year to date um, for the first three months is three months compared to three months. Um, or you can see our total sales tax is still growing. Last year it grew quite a bit. This year we're still seeing some growth. Vehicle license, state shared sales tax are about flat. State shared income tax, that's the one that we got that extra amount budgeted to us from the state. So it's going up quite a bit. HERF revenue, highway user funds are, are flat. And then water and sewer service fees are just right in there. And the capital improvement, that's really sales tax, the one percent we move over from the general fund. So our revenues are holding steady or doing actually a little bit better than we thought. Expenses are still, are so far, everybody's right under budget with just three months to go. And so that's all I had for this evening. If there's any questions?
Thank you.
How about over here?
I do. Okay. Ju- just one question, forty-three parts.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the franchise tax, we've had, I see a significant outlier increase of two hundred and thirty percent as compared at least by the last three fiscal years. Can you just for my own edification, tell me what, what's drive it? What's the franchise tax? To me, that's a corporate tax, am I wrong or?
Um, yeah, so the franchise tax are our APS, Southern Union Gas Company. And then our cable company pay, and then also our, the water company. So those three entities actually pay the franchise tax.
So I mean, how, how do you rationalize why we have a two hundred and thirty percent increase?
Uh, well, it's still a small, it's a very small amount. It's from fourteen thou, from forty-two hundred to four, fourteen thousand. So it's just the timing of a receipt. We might have received the APS receipt earlier this year than we did last year.
And then under the expenditures, I'm, it's ironic, mayor and council, I see we, we are, is, what's the drive that we're up a hundred and nineteen percent?
More members went to the league conference this year than the prior year.
That's what I thought it was, okay. I, I, I was wondering, because consistently every year about the first quarter, you see that increase.
Yeah, we see that little bit of bump. And it's just like in the, the town clerks thing, we had an election this year, so you see that little bump, but through the fiscal year, it'll level back out.
And then under grant funding, did we not get the CB, the CD BG grant for the uh, retro renovations of our, at the senior center?
Oh, no, we did, but we haven't received any funds for it yet. So we're spending uh, the CBG, we, we get reimbursed after the fact.
Okay.
So we'll spend the money and then we'll, we'll see the funds come in.
And then the last question I had, and you kind of touched it, but I didn't quite catch it. We, we are, what's the rationale? Why did we have an increase of that many more users on sewer or water this last, as compared to last fiscal year?
I don't, I can't tell you that off the top of my head, but we do have every year we've had, I can, I can provide that to you.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, because that's a two hundred and forty thousand dollar increase as compared to other years.
Yeah, and that could just be also uh, buy-in fees too. So I, I could provide that to you.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. All right. Entertaining motion, please.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve uh, action item six A. Financial report for the three-month period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six B, consideration, possible action to prove ordinance twenty-two, nine, two, four, to rezone approximately two point zero nine acres for commercial light, commercial heavy by applicant Jason Nance. Will is not here, so we have Bethan.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. Um, yes, I'm not Will, um, Bethan Hang, planner with the town. Uh, tonight, the item before you is a request for a rezone for a commercial property that's relocating. Um, this is the relocation of B and M Paintings and Rock Customs on thirteen eighty-three South State Route eighty-nine. The applicant is in attendance tonight. Now, roughly two acre property is located at thirteen eighty-three South State Route eighty-nine, just east of Highway eighty-nine. This subject property is just north of the location of Ace Hardware. Um, and also north to Antelope Valley Apartments. And we've got Parkside Village to the northeast and Lantana Plaza to the northwest. So before you is the site plan provided by the applicant. The applicant has expressed that he would like to emulate the existing layout on this subject property. Um, I've just realized uh, that I've failed to mention that this rezone is a request from commercial light to commercial heavy. So staff believes it's important to note that prior to pursuing the rezone process, the applicant performed outreach to the surrounding neighbors um, to gather support and also to let them know of his intention to rezone that property. The zoning request was brought to planning and zoning on October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. No discussion from the commission um, with one public comment in favor of the rezone. The vote was seven to zero in favor of the rezone. And with that, staff recommends, oh, the Planning and Zoning Commission forwards to the Town Council a recommendation of approval for the rezone.
Yeah, you have any questions for staff?
I have none.
How about on this side?
Nope.
Um, what's the reason for commercial light to commercial heavy?
So maybe the type of business and the requested land use fits within what is permitted within commercial heavy, but not commercial light, which is what the property currently is.
And what is the zoning to the north?
What did you say?
I asked what the zoning was on the, to the north. That's the slide it, yeah.
Right here. So the subject property or the property that's to the north of the subject property is commercial light right now. Ace Hardware is commercial heavy.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, huh?
Not for me.
Does the applicant have anything they'd like to say to us? It's entirely up to you.
Thank you very much for listening and having me tonight. Um, I'm Jason Nance, owner of B and M Painting and Rock Customs and B and M Remodeling here in Chino Valley. Um, I've been here for, since two thousand and three, obviously been in business for a long time here, been a contractor here for a long time too. Um, just so you guys understand, there's not going to be any type of wet coating painting or anything like that. The painting business, guys leave, they go out within the community, within Prescott Valley, the Quad Cities, Prescott, Chino Valley, Baldwin. Everything's done on site. There's nothing done on location other than powder coating. And I don't know if you guys know powder coating, it's zero flammability. Um, you can put a match to it, a lighter to it, it's not going to light. Um, everything's through ventilations and filter systems within the building itself. So there is no spraying outside, things like that. Uh, and then B and M Painting, like I said, trucks leave in the morning, B and M Remodeling, the trucks leave in the morning, everything's done within the local communities.
All right.
All right.
Any questions for?
Nope.
Just a comment, I think you're, your trucks, you run a very professional looking outfit because your trucks are always very clean.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna, I'm going to declare the open a public hearing. Um, do we have any comment cards on this? Or anyone that?
I did not get any comment cards for.
Okay, does anyone wants to make comment? Yes, sir. Can you please come up to the? Just take your time.
My name's Edward Artlip, I'm a resident of uh, Chino Valley. Live on Parkside, just off of uh, the street that we're talking about, I've forgotten his name. Uh, Jason's crews that was mentioned are very clean. Uh, they're uh, he's a very well organized. Uh, I've enjoyed having him for a neighbor. Uh, just want, thought that that was something that should be brought up.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Amen.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I will make a motion, we approve item six C, ordinance two zero two-two dash nine two five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six C, consideration, possible. Whoa, what?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I actually um, made a motion for the wrong ordinance.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, we'll strike that one and back up.
Thank you. Um, I will make a motion, we approve item six B, ordinance two zero two-two dash nine two four.
Second that one.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six C, consideration, possible action to approve ordinance twenty-two, nine, twenty-five for the creation of the town of Chino Valley Building Advisory Board, Lori.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Lori Lineberry, your Development Services Director. Back in July, we had a study session where we, this was one of the topics um, about creating a building advisory board, not just an appeals board, but a board that can also look at the new codes, the ones that we look at every six years. This would be the group that would vet that. And if there were amendments, they would be the, the tradespeople that would make those suggestions that would come to you. Um, I've been working with our building official who is here tonight uh, for a number of months on this. And our attorney has taken my draft, which I was focusing on the commercial and the residential codes. They wrapped in the, all of the others, the, the fuel, gas, the um, electrical, the plumbing. Um, and I'm sure there's one more, the conservation code, the energy code. And um, they looked at all of those other codes. And if we, if everybody, if every community did this right, every community would have like ten appeals boards of three people each. Which is ridiculous because that doesn't happen even in large communities. And so the idea was pulling the specialty trades that they're calling for in this one group. And so this one group serves as in a, as a hearing and appeals board for all of the trades that we have codes for. Um, I know that um, Andrew and Michael worked on that for us and they've got it all in great order for us. If you had questions about the board itself and how that will run, I've got the building official here. Um, I know he's been talking to folks in the community and probably has some names for some people that would be interested in serving on this board.
How you doing? Are you going to talk or are we just going to ask you a question?
If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
No questions, I follow it. Yeah, I don't have a, this, well, I guess I do. So just for clarification, this will, I was on the U D O Subcommittee for the time that it was in process under the ad hoc. Um, this will, if going forward, not only include that, but a lot more of what we have to review within the town. Is that not correct?
So this just deals with our building codes.
Okay.
And the U D O uh, piece is in a separate section of the code. This is in the town code.
Okay.
So that it's two different things. But it does cover a lot more than what the original language in the code, the town code calls for. Much broader appeal, it will address appeals from all of the trades. And it will be our board to review all of the, the new codes. So that's much, a much broader scope than what we currently have in the town code.
Okay, thank you.
So i- in addition to dealing with the technical advisement issues related to building and construction, commercial, residential, whatever, it will also absorb the current Board of Appeals roles as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then a four, it's a five person, as I was reading, it's five persons, three persons for a um, a quorum. If there is a complaint or a challenge to a finding from the bill, the building inspector and it's dealing with, say, electricity. And they have a quorum, but the electrical person is not in that quorum, can that board still address the appeal?
We would make sure that that tradesperson expert is there to address the issue. And first of all, they should go to the building official if they have a concern about anything that uh, an inspector has done out in the field. Because he's, he's our, he's our overarching expert in-house. And if they still have issues after that, then it would be an appeal, an official appeal to the board.
Okay, um, let me see something here. Can a member of the planning and zoning board potentially be on that board as well?
Only if they qualify as one of these tradespeople.
Or one of the other uh, citizen at large will.
And the citizen at large has to be related to the construction industry.
Yeah. Okay. And then under section F, appeals procedure, this is just a fine tuning detail, but it talks about the board upon receipt of an appeal uh, from the building official. Now she'll conduct a hearing no later than twenty days after receipt of the appeal and the staff report. So do both, the, the twenty days doesn't start until both are received? Is it calendar days or workdays?
Well, Andrew may have to clarify that. My understanding it's calendar days and it's from the date we receive the appeal.
Okay, because that's, and I trust that's how you would handle it.
Right.
But you're not always going to be in that seat. So I know that you would do it this way, but I, you know, if it were me, I see a lot of people and myself in, in the past have been caught up on, you know, delays. So, because it says twenty days and uh, after twenty days after the receipt of the appeal and staff report, what I don't want to see happen is a staff member dragged their feet because they don't care for the person or whatever, and they wait another fifteen, twenty days. Now that twenty days becomes thirty days. So that's why I want to know if we can clean that language up to make it so that when I, if, if I was the one submitting an appeal, I want to know with certainty when is my date, what's the latest my date's going to have? And this kind of leaves it open to interpretation. I know how you would do it, but the person behind you, I can't be assured it would be like that.
I'm going to deflect to um, our town attorney.
Andrew, that's you.
Mr. Mayor, Council Member, uh, we can certainly make uh, the motion actually include that we clarify that language, just to be certain. I'm trying to pull it up right now to see if I can get the specific area that you're looking for. If you can direct us to that, it'd be helpful.
Section F, paragraph three. Section F, paragraph three.
What page?
Uh, on our seventy seven of seven, page seventy seven to seventy seven on our packet. It's the very last page, so it'd be page three of. Well, it's just the last page of our packet. It's a granular detail, but it was, it's one that could annoy someone down the road.
Yeah, the, the way that I read it, uh, Mayor and Council, is that the board upon receiving the appeal and the report. Shall conduct a hearing no later than twenty days after received the appeal and the staff report. I can see where your, where your concern is that there's not necessarily a time deadline. For when the appeal and the staff report need to be delivered to the board, which we should actually. Put in place some firm dates that the board has time to review the appeal as well. So if we can, when you have the motion, have the motion include, um, adding a. Firm date for delivery of the appeal and the staff report to the board. Uh, I think we can make a tweak and make that work for it.
Okay, so can, can we, can we have our building official back up?
You bet.
And a quick question while we have him coming up that, asking if he can address as well. Is the seven days that we have for the notification to the, the board, is that a good date for you? In terms of when the deadline would be for the, uh, staff report and the appeal to be delivered to the board as well?
It is.
Okay.
So, does. Does twenty days give us time to have the review and get it back? Can, can twenty days be twenty days? Or does staff need a little bit longer?
No, I don't believe so. I think that that's.
They should be handled in that amount of time.
I agree, yeah. I mean, we're talking about construction, you know, a, a, a build, so we're not going to hold up a build for. Uh, you know, a period of time, we're going to get it done as quickly as we can.
Okay. Well, then that answers our question, I guess. If there's, if the twenty days is sufficient to get the whole thing wrapped up, then we should be good.
And I don't have any dispute about the duration of time. It's just a definitive, I mean, I've just seen in so many places in government where, you know, the, the time. Cause just because of the word after receipt of the appeal and staff report. So I got the appeal on January first, but I didn't get the staff report until February fourteenth. Therefore, does a twenty day start from February twen- uh, fourteenth, or does it start at January first? And that, and, and, and I don't anticipate that ever being an issue under Ms. Lineberry, but. I know it's an issue that we've seen these kind of words be used to challenge.
Right, well, for both of us, we would probably lose our jobs if we held up a construction site for six weeks.
Yeah.
Cause we're messing around with a staff report. That's not how we work.
Right, I know that.
And I, and I know, I can see why you can read it that way.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you have, uh, you have a board selected for this? No?
I, my direction was to talk, sorry, my direction was to, um, just talk to some people in the community to see if there was interest and there was plenty.
There wasn't.
Yeah. So I would be prepared to, um, recommend names or, or put people in contact with the, the council.
And the appointment of that happens through council, or the, through the appointments committee?
Yes.
Well, it would be.
Through council.
But that would go to appointments committee for review of applicants.
Whatever that normal process is, but, but the council's the deciding group on.
Right.
Who's on the committee.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Done it? Good. How about over here? Good, good, good?
Yep, fine.
We're all good. Thank you very much. Any?
All right, I will make a motion, we approve item six C ordinance two zero two two dash nine two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any, oh, yes, sir.
Can we read that or believe that motion to include the modifications? To ensure we have a direct timeline for the, uh, report from the building official. And the appeal to be delivered to the board prior to the hearing. Is that included or not included?
Uh, we did not discuss.
We agreed on it, but I guess.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to pin out the, the verbiage.
Okay, so we're gonna strike the motion, open.
Strike it.
And really, uh, ma'am Vice Mayor, all we really need is direction to amend subsection F. Uh, to ensure specific timeframes for the. Delivery of the report and the hearing. And we can go from there.
Got it.
Hmm hmm. Okay, um, to ensure proper timeframes and what was the last three words?
And, uh, delivery of the staff report.
And delivery of staff report. Okay, here we go again. I will make a motion, we approve item six C ordinance two zero two two dash nine two five. Also amending subsection F to ensure proper time. Frames and delivery of staff reports.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Turner.
Fine. I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.
Is that his favorite part of the?